19th of July and this meeting is called to order. We will start with our chaplain prayer and pledges and we are lucky today to have Ralph Dawkins to do both with us, lead us in both, I should say.
Good to see you all again. Good morning, everyone. Let's pray. Father, thank you for the opportunity to invoke prayer through your word and into this city gathering of city officials, leaders, and concerned citizens. Lord, your word declares that we should acknowledge you in all of our ways and you would direct our paths. And you said that if we delight ourselves in you, you would give us the desires of our heart. Your word declares in Jeremiah 29 and 11 that you already know the plans that you have for us, plans of prosperity and not of evil and plans that will bring us a brighter future and a hope. And so we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead this community in which we live, work, and play. You said that we should pray for those that are in authority over this city, so I lift up the mayor and her staff and assistants, the city council members, the city manager, and every person in department that is instrumental in leading and directing our city. I pray for our city leaders, that you would give them the responsibility to watch and guide over our city that they serve. And Lord, and just as you made Ezekiel a prophet and a watchman over the people of Israel, I pray for these city leaders, that they will be godly watchmen and watchwomen over our city, our neighborhoods, and businesses. Father, I pray that you give these servant leaders knowledge, wisdom, courage, on how to deal with the community, the family, and the facilities, and the businesses, and any other problems that arise facing our city. And lastly, I pray for the chief of police, the entire police force, the sheriff's department, the fire department, the fire chief, and all the first responders who serve our city. I pray that you would bless us all, our city of San Angelo, with economic prosperity, and may you draw in and attract to our city industry, businesses, corporations, that will produce jobs and revenue and help us to grow and prosper. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen? And amen. Let's say the pledge to Texas flag.
Stop. We're gonna do it right. Texas, we're gonna do this one first. Then we're gonna move over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On to the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas.
One state, under God, one and indivisible. I appreciate your effort to move Texas up.
Vacation. I'm just getting back from vacation, so.
We have one proclamation today, so those of you who are in the audience for this proclamation, please come forward. Are there any more people in the audience now or never? We're moving on. They say the more the merrier, and we're gonna prove it in just a minute. On July 28, 1866, Congress passed the Army Organization Act, allowing African-American men, including many former slaves, to serve in the specially-created all-black military units following the Civil War. The original troops were 9th and 10th Cavalry and the 38th, 39th, 40th, and 41st Infantry. In 1869, the four infantry regiments were reorganized to form the 24th and 25th Infantry. Congress established these all-black regiments to help rebuild the country after the Civil War and to patrol the remote western frontier during the Indian Wars. A primary assignment for these soldiers was to make the way for Americans moving westward safe. These soldiers served in Arizona, California, Kansas, Louisiana, Montana, Nebraska, New York, Oklahoma, Texas, Utah, Vermont, Virginia, Cuba, Mexico, and the Philippines. They were recognized for their heroics, including serving with Theodore Roosevelt and riding alongside the Rough Riders in Cuba during the Spanish-American War and aided in the capture of Billy the Kid and Pancho Villa. These soldiers were reportedly cited for heroism and dedication to duty and account for at least 22 received Congressional Medals of Honor. In 1868, the first black troops reported at Fort Concho in San Angelo, Texas. The initial infantry regiments reported were the 38th and 41st Infanteries and the 9th and 10th Calvaries. During their service time at the fort until 1885, these regiments were assigned various duties and worked in many campaigns with distinction. During the Indian Wars, these soldiers were given the name, quote, "Buffalo Soldiers" by Native Americans of the Great Plains for their bravery and courage, which reminded them of the fierceness of the buffalo. These buffalo soldiers experienced racial prejudice and discrimination, yet served bravely and with distinction. In addition to opening up the West for settlement, these soldiers, along with their white counterparts, mapped the West, stretched telegraph lines allowing the area connection to the East, served as police force where no law existed, served as park rangers in the newly-created national parks, and generally facilitated the civilization of the center of the nation. Collectively, the buffalo soldiers had low court martial and desertion rates. Such acts of honor and valor directly contributed in later years to the formation of the Tuskegee Airmen and Fighter Pilots known as Red Tails in World War II. Before President Harry Truman signed the Executive Order 9981 in 1948, more than 200,000 African-American men served in the United States Military in segregated units. Executive Order 9981 called for equal treatment and opportunity for all African-American service members. During the 102nd Congress of the United States of America, the second session held in Washington, DC on Friday, January 3, 1992, a joint resolution was presented and passed as Buffalo Soldiers' Day. This day of honor is recognized July 28 of each year. The San Angelo Chapter of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, or NAACP, under the leadership of its president Shirley L. Spears, has initiated a project to create a Buffalo Soldier Memorial in the Paseo de Santa Angela Park to finally honor the legacy of those courageous men and give special recognition to many who served at Fort Concho and the four who were buried at Fairmont and Delta Memorial Cemeteries. The San Angelo NAACP Buffalo Soldier Memorial establishes a place of honor for the many who have not been given their proper recognition in United States history and the United States Army. July 28 through the 30th will honor the lives of these soldiers in a full weekend of information, celebration, and honor in a unique partnership with the Fort Concho National Historic Landmark and the San Angelo NAACP. The city of San Angelo honors the service of these soldiers at Fort Concho and recognizes the San Angelo NAACP for its plan to create a fitting memorial and weekend of honor. Therefore, I Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim July 28 through 30, 2022, as National Buffalo Soldier Day Weekend in San Angelo, Texas, and call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. Would you like to speak? I have a dry mouth after that. That's a lot.
Well, good morning, everybody. Thank you, mayor and council, for this proclamation. I hope that it was very long, I realize that, but it's important for us to honor our men who have served in the military. We have a great history here with San Angelo, Fort Concho, and the history in general for the formation of the city. So we want everyone to be well-informed and advised about what these men did. I don't want you to just think, oh, well, the buffalo soldiers served here. I want you to be comfortable with who the buffalo soldiers were and their true contributions to not only San Angelo and its formation, but to the West as they helped America move west and find new territory. On the 28th through the 30th, we will be hosting events at the fort, primarily to honor these men. We have some special treats. We have a dinner on Friday with some of our speakers and team members from Arizona. We want you all to come in and celebrate this National Buffalo Soldier Day and to experience this buffalo soldier living history. So again, please come out and visit us on the 28th for our military retreat at Fort Concho on the parade grounds. On Friday, we'll have a living history program and dinner. And on Saturday, we have a wonderful lineup that's family-friendly of buffalo soldier movies, so that you can kind of get into the feel of what Hollywood thinks of the buffalo soldiers. So again, thank you to our council persons, our city managers, all of you who serve. I know there are a couple of people that came in a little late. If you all want to come up for this last photo, let me just also say that Carl White is standing back there. He's our city liaison, and he's not coming up here. He doesn't like taking pictures. But some of our guys that are on our committee are also watching on YouTube. And so we want to honor, there are a lot of things that our black residents have contributed. Duddra, you want to come up? That have, they have contributed to this city. So we want to honor it, and this year with the building of the Buffalo Soldier Memorial that is well underway, we want you all to be proud of this contribution and this landmark to our city and our community. Thank you.
May I ask you about the 28th, the way to Fort Concho down? Before we do it, because it could be 108.
Well, it's scheduled for 5:30, so come on out, wear your hat, and stand up under the quarter so that you don't have to have direct heat. But we do want you to come out. It should only take about 15 or 20 minutes, right, Bob?
Five.
Okay. So about 15 or 20 minutes. He said five minutes.
Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time.
It would only take five minutes, so come on out and support members of the battalion
Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating
from Goodfellow Air Force Base for that. And that kicks off the full weekend, so we hope to see you all at various activities.
their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks
Thank you.
to less than three minutes. I'm gonna start with an announcement. Charlotte Farmer passed away this week. I'm not sure whether it was yesterday or Sunday, but she served on the city council for a number of years, and there will certainly be an announcement in terms of her, the funeral arrangements as the week progresses, but we just wanted to make sure everyone was aware. Charlotte Farmer passed away this, over the past few days. Do I have people here who would like to come forward and offer public comment? Seeing none, we will move into our consent agenda. I will ask if there's items that council would like to pull. Larry, do you have an item?
No, ma'am.
D, please. Lucy?
I, C, please.
Harry?
No, ma'am.
Tom?
No, ma'am.
Tommy?
No, ma'am.
And I'm going to pull item E. So with that, I will ask that, for a motion to approve on the consent agenda item A and item B, may I have that motion?
No, moved.
Lucy made a motion to approve. Karen seconded that motion. Do we have public comment concerning items A or items B? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes, or consent agenda item A and B passes 7 to 0. We will move into item C, consider approving a memorandum of understanding between the San Angelo Area Foundation and the city of San Angelo facilitating the construction of the Buffalo Soldiers Memorial at El Paseo de Santa Angela Park and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Lucy, do you have questions?
Yes, ma'am. I would just spoke about this great project. I was just wondering, once it's approved and when, what day or what's the time limit from the starting date to the ending date? How long will it take?
Once approved, they'll move it, move into design, and if Matt Lewis is here, he might be able to speak to that, but it'll probably take at least, I would say, six months for design, maybe less. So we're probably looking at a year for construction of the project. It's not a lot. You're not talking any structures, some columns and lighting, so it shouldn't take much. I would think it could be accomplished within a year.
Within a year.
Matt, would you like to add comment?
And I echo what Carl says, hopefully quicker, but you know, we've learned, nothing moves fast in the world of site design. You know, there could be unknown, we don't think there are any unknown issues, but just in case, once the site design is approved by the city, we're able to move forward with construction, it should move fairly quickly. We hopeful, hopefully, long before a year, so that whenever they celebrate this next year, we have this all complete.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for asking.
Any further questions or comments on item C?
I move to approve.
Seconded by Harry. Any public comment concerning item C? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7 to 0. We will move into item D, consider a resolution calling a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and establishing alternative notice procedures. John James, you're here. Karen, do you have questions?
I would just like to hear Director James clarify for those present and those listening, along with council and staff, what exactly this means for the citizens, and we may, I may in fact, ask the city attorney to also give her opinion. The goal, of course, is to make sure citizens have a voice in the decisions that their community makes, so that they are acting in partnership with us. So hopefully, we will learn here today that not only is there an alternative method, but existing methods may be preserved and other things may be possible. Thank you, John.
Yes. So in the past, for zoning cases, so if somebody's rezoning their property, there's required notices that get sent out to the property owners themselves and everyone within 200 feet. However, when we are changing an ordinance, the zoning ordinance, notices go in the newspaper, items go on the website, but there is no requirement to notify by mail anyone in the community. There was a recent court case, City of Austin, related to an ordinance change that they did, and basically, what the court determined was that if you're changing the zoning in a way that affects a zoning district, you have to notify the property owners affected by that change and the properties within 200 feet. So it was, it was basically a rereading of the state statute in terms of notice. And so what that means is if we're changing the requirements in a zoning district, for example, on this meeting, there's one that affects short-term rentals in all districts except RS zoning. If we were to follow the letter of that court ruling, we would be sending 40,000, 50,000 letters out to notify people of that change to the ordinance. And so we don't think that's a reasonable use of our time or city funds, when that's never been a requirement in the past. But what the state statute allows is an alternative procedure where the city council can call a special meeting of the Planning Commission and city council together, and they can consider those items without those mailed notices. We have no intention of doing that for zoning cases, that we've always notified the surrounding property owners and will continue to do so. In fact, on this special meeting, there is an item that is a rezoning, but for that one, we have already sent those notices of the zoning case to those surrounding property owners. It's merely a way to have a way to amend our zoning ordinance without having to send those tens of thousands of notices.
Does that answer your question, Karen? Or do you have further questions?
For the most part, I, we regularly have an unfilled room when we have our council meetings, and so that would perhaps indicate that there's still a gap in, in community awareness of what's happening. I'm not sure, and I'm not opposed to what you're proposing. I'm wondering if we can do more, however, to make the public aware, so that there's not disappointment after the fact. Are we allowed to post on the city website, or does the city have a Facebook page where information can be shared? Is that allowed?
Yes, and in fact, on, we don't typically do that for all items, but when we know there are things that have large community interest, for example, the recent sidewalk ordinance discussions, those were posted on the public notice page of the city's website. They were put out on social media, reminders of upcoming meetings. That's something we've talked about with the Planning Commission, how we can do more on those sorts of public notices. And, you know, we've talked with our public information office about how to, how to use the website and how to use social media to get the word out on those kinds of things better. And so we'll be bringing a plan to the Planning Commission. They've asked for us to bring some ideas of how to do better on those notices and getting the word out, so we're working on a strategy to do that.
I think the biggest thing that I hear is people are not aware, first of all, perhaps they don't take the Standard Times or San Angelo Standard Times, and second of all, they don't read the classifieds. The issue is, all of those are always posted in the Standard Times, so if you don't take the paper, you're gonna have a problem. And second of all, if you don't read the classifieds, you're not gonna find it. But we've always published it. It is by law we have to publish it, but the citizens must read and understand where it is. I'm not sure if people are aware that something's coming up as a zoning issue, so they don't look, but then again, they have to realize that we have to do that. It's the law, and so we follow that. In fact, if we've missed a deadline for a particular issue, we've postponed that issue for later discussion if we miss the deadline to publish. So, but the citizens need to understand, all zoning issues that aren't in this big magnitude are published in the Standard Times in the classifieds. It's not a news article, it's a classified article.
Now, we do also reach out to the media, so on items that are of broad interest, I would say, in almost every case, if not every case, there will be actual news articles, stories on the local news, and so word does get out on things that are of broad interest. Now, we do bring some things that are cleanup items and rewording some language, and those don't often get, get noticed, but I would say on the items that are at least potentially controversial, you do see the room more filled with people because word does get out.
Further questions?
No, ma'am. Thank you for allowing Mr. James to clarify for us.
Would you like to make the motion for approval? Okay. Seconded by Lucy. Any public comment on item D? Seeing none, oh, you must come forward. If you would, please, and when you get to the microphone, please introduce yourself and the SMD area in which you live.
My name is Evelyn Smith.
I'm gonna bring the microphone down so we can hear a little better.
Evelyn Smith, and I'm in SMD 5. And I had a question about notification. I understand everything that you're, you're saying about public. Do we have a responsibility, try to read the paper, find out this information, go on social media, but there are people who just can't, don't, can't read, don't have the ability to, one reason or another. My question is, is it possible to put some kind of notice or stake on the ground in different neighborhoods, saying that these changes are coming, and please contact, you know, this particular person, POC? Is that possible to do? Just like we put the signs for voting in the yards and different things?
There are zoning signs that are put in the yards which are impacted by zoning change, so that also is part of the requirement when a zoning request for change happens. So those residents or businesses in which that zoning will be impacted or changed, there are signs posted in those yards.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor of approving item D, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes 7 to 0. We will move into item E, consider a resolution of the City of San Angelo City Council amending the schedule of fees and charges, to amend charges for development services, municipal pool, fire ambulance services, and health services. Tina?
Thank you, ma'am.
You'll go through all that.
Yes, ma'am. Tina Dersky, Director of Finance. We have several fees we're bringing forward. You'll recall that typically, we do fee review. Once annually, we usually start that process in February. We have put that on hold temporarily through the COVID-19 pandemic. We expect to probably start that back up this next February for your regular review. We try to bring a third of our fees every year so that we cover all of our fees within a three-year period. So just to give you kind of a background of where we've been and where we're going with that, those fees we have up today are, the first one is for development services, site plans. The current fee is $50 for a Tier 1, $100 for a Tier 2, and $250 for a Tier 3. Oh, thank you. I didn't realize we had slides. That'll help. The proposed fee is $175 for minor site plans, $350 for major site plans, cost of service being $283 and $368 respectively. We expect a financial impact of $8,000. If you have questions relating to definitions of major and minor site plans or how that financial impact works, I did ask John James to be prepared to answer those questions.
I think my, my question is the following, or my comment is the following, that as we are trying to increase the number of house, homes that are in affordable price ranges, and because interest rates are going up, because inflation exists, because people are struggling right now financially, the question mark is, is the timing of this correct, and how will it impact individuals' ability to find a home that they can afford?
Actually, this fee that you're looking at here only applies to commercial development. There's no change to residential permit, building a new home. This will not affect that. These are only.
It's a key part of this that we need to make sure everyone understands, because it doesn't indicate that it would be a, not impact residential, but commercial only.
Yeah, and if, if you look in the detailed fee schedule, there, there is that distinction, and our ordinance makes that distinction between these site plans and a residential building permit.
But just for the public's information, they watch Channel 17, and we need to be very vocal about what these issues are.
Absolutely.
Okay. Next.
The next fee is for the municipal pool, private rentals. All of these fees, I'll just mention, will not go in fact, into effect until 10/1 of this year, so in the FY '23 budget. So this fee would be for next summer's season for the swimming pool. The current fee is $250 for two hours for up to 100 people, $100 for each additional 100 people. Proposed would be 300 for two hours, up to 100 people, 120 for each additional 100, cost of service being 332 and 168 respectively, and an expected financial impact of $4,500.
My question is, and I'm okay with these fees, but the question is, how does that impact the overall finances of the municipal pool? Because the issue is, are we running in the red? Are we still in the black in terms of operating the municipal pool? Because that, we need to understand as a council.
Mm-hmm.
It's one-
But just for the public's information, they watch Channel 17, and we need to be very vocal about what these issues are.
Absolutely.
Okay, next?
The next fee is for the municipal pool, private rentals. All of these fees, I'll just mention, will not go in fact, into effect until 10/1 of this year, so in the FY '23 budget. So this fee would be for next summer's season for the swimming pool. The current fee is $250 for two hours for up to 100 people, $100 for each additional 100 people. Proposed would be 300 for two hours, up to 100 people, 120 for each additional 100, cost of service being 332 and 168 respectively, and an expected financial impact of $4,500.
My question is, and I'm okay with these fees, but the question is, how does that impact the overall finances of the municipal pool? Because the issue is, are we running in the red? Are we still in the black in terms of operating the municipal pool? Because that, we need to understand as a council.
Mm-hmm.
It's one thing, these look fine, but what does the financial, what is the financial impact, and what are we doing on municipal pool? I know last time when we went through our budgeting, it was mentioned that the municipal pool would no longer be running in the black, it would start to run in the red. But see, we need to know that, and we need the information on that. Does this solve the problem? Does it not? What do we need to be doing to look at it to make sure that we aren't in the red on the municipal pool?
Okay, I can speak to it. I know from the financial side of things, and maybe Carl might speak to the operational of how we fix it. This will not solve the problem. I believe this current fiscal year, they went into deficit of $70,000, around $70,000, so that's being subsidized by the general fund.
Our general fund dollars are really tight.
Yes, ma'am.
Subsidizing all these things is going to be very difficult in the '22, '23 budget, so I'm not sure, does this solve, or do we have to look at other issues as it relates to the municipal pool, bottom line?
Yes, ma'am, I agree, and, and I'll remind you that we did just spend about $250,000 to fix the pool filter and pump system, so you're, you're correct in being concerned about that. As far as a solution, I know that Carl and Brent keep an eye on, you know, how competitive our fees can be for entering the pool, and what other cities and what other pools in our area are doing, and so he may be able to help speak to what we could do to try to move forward in fixing, you know, those concerns.
I know at 108 degrees, this municipal pool is quite valuable, and I also know at 108 degrees, evaporation in terms of water is significant. But I think we need to approve a municipal pool strategy, not just a fee increase, but an overall picture of what's happening at the municipal pool, and develop a strategy relative to that. Just because the pool's not open in September, what can be done in September at that pool that would bring some revenue in? I think we've got to be a broader-minded person as it relates to managing this municipal pool.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Just if I might, just a reminder that maybe the citizens didn't, didn't remember, we haven't raised fees on, in two years because of COVID. We put that on hold, so some of these probably would have been, by now, would have been to a spot where we were doing business, the fees would have taken care of some of the things that you have concerns about. I, I agree, we need to have an overall strategy of how we get to the spot where the money that we're bringing in, net zero, so we don't have to take money out of the general fund. But citizens need to understand, for two years, we didn't, we didn't raise fees.
Well, for, also remind everybody, during COVID, we couldn't even open up the pool, so it wasn't just about fees, it was the fact that we weren't allowed to even use the pool, so it's a combination of things. But I think before we approve this piece of this, the municipal pool thing, we as a council deserve an overall picture of what can be strategically done to make the municipal pool a little more, at least break even. We don't have to make money at municipal pool, but I think it's a real problem when we have to use general fund dollars for operating it, and particularly with the large investment we just made. That's in addition to the $70,000 hole that we're, we've dug. So I can't recommend that this particular piece of this be approved. Yes?
Tina, and I don't know if Carl's here, but having a little bit of a background, to me, this looks like this is a cost for when we have to add extra personnel to handle larger groups. Would that be correct?
Carl, where are you?
I'll speak to what I know about that, and that is that staffing is difficult. We're having staffing issues citywide, and so I think that they're having trouble hiring lifeguards in the first place, so that may be part of the issue, but-
Well, people are having a hard time hiring lifeguards, no matter where, whether it's Bentwood Country Club, or Browns Pool, whatever. We know that's an issue. This doesn't solve it.
Mayor, I do want to point out as well that as far as staffing, staffing is not what's taking up the cost at this point because we're understaffed. Really, what would address it is going to be an adjustment in fees, and if this isn't enough, then we need to adjust it to a point where it's enough to at least break even. But again, we're ever mindful of how much we can charge our citizens to come to the pool. So again, I want to make sure that we keep in mind that we do want to make those adjustments, but we have had some myths this year. You mentioned a while ago, COVID-19, the pool wasn't running this year. It's barely, I mean, this past, past week it turned on. So there, there are all those issues, but we can come back with a plan, but a lot of it's going to do with what fee should we be at?
Well, and that's the reason I bring up the fine, what's the strategy here?
Sure.
We don't have a strategy here. All we're doing is raising some minimal fee dollars, which doesn't solve the issue.
And it doesn't cover the cost of service, if you look on the screen as well.
Exactly. So this part of it, I can't support because I don't know what the plan is. There's no plan here.
I have a question, ma'am.
Go ahead, Lucy.
How often do we rent out the pool? I mean, is it on a weekly basis? Is it, how often?
Rentals, we have, we can do rentals, two shifts during each evening that the pool's operational, and they're always popular, they're almost always booked with few exceptions. So we know that we can go up on that fee because the demand is very high.
I also say, just an observation here, if it's $200 per two hours for 1 to 100 people, I mean, you're going to pay 250 if you have 25 of your best friends, and you're going to pay 200, $250 if it's 99 of your best friends. That doesn't make sense to me. There needs to be further consideration, and I don't want to put the cost prohibitive for citizens to not be able to use, but this plan doesn't work for me.
Mayor, this is just one portion as far as the fees for the municipal pool, so we'll take a look at the whole municipal, municipal pool fees and come up with a strategy then, will it push us closer to, to break even then, so?
You have to.
Because this is just one part of it, so-
I know, and that's the reason we can't just approve one piece, we need a plan. And I think a plan has to include things like, it's the same if you have 25 people or 99 people. That doesn't make sense to me.
In fairness to staff as well, I do want to say that, again, COVID-19, as far as the protocol that we've used, we haven't adjusted the, the fees. So we can take a look at fees now and toss that part of it aside, then by all means, we can do that and present something that is closer to break even.
And I, I also want to look at it and say, it's a fabulous facility, and it's, you know, warm in August, it's warm in September. I mean, there are things that we need to look at in terms of expansion of service, better use of that facility day in and day out, and come up with a better plan.
We will try to get that together in time for the general fund budget workshop, since this is within the general fund. If we can get that together, we'll present it there.
Okay, thank you. The next one?
The next, several fees are related to fire. The first one is advanced life support type one emergency, the current fee's 1215, proposing to go to cost of service at 1621. Just a quick note that the financial impact for all of these fee increases will be $133,000, almost $134,000 to the general fund.
This makes sense because a lot of people have insurance, and so I think that this financially makes sense.
Okay. The next one is for advanced life support type two, current fee 1760, also proposing to go to cost of service at 2347. Next one is basic life support emergency, current fee's 1,025, proposing cost of service of 1365. Next is fire basic life support non-emergency, current fee of 640, cost of service 853. And then the fire mileage fee, the current fee is $14, proposing cost of service of $22.
Questions for Tina on, on those issues on the fire? Okay.
The next fee is for environmental health, farmer's market food producer permit. It's my understanding that this is directed by state law, that the current fee is currently $100 for a seasonal, proposing to go to $100 annual. We expect no financial impact from that because, from my understanding, typically, they only permit for the seasonal six months of the year anyway, so it wouldn't really change their usage of that permit fee. Any questions on that one? Sandra is here, if you have questions as far as how that works.
Questions for Sandra on this item? So, because it has to go from six months to 12 months, and if it's six months, it's $100, why is it for 12 months, the same $100?
I believe state law directs that you cannot charge more than $100.
That's an important statement to make. Thank you.
And our last fee here this morning is for the environmental health late fee. The, the current fee is $25, not making any proposed changes to that fee, but just to clarify the language in the, or, in the resolution, that it is $25 per month after January 31st, which was when it becomes late.
Not just one $25, but $25 per month.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Questions or comments for council? All right, then I am going to make a proposal to approve item E with the exception of the municipal pool fees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Lucy, any public comment? Please come forward.
Hello, my name's Kimberly Henry, and I'm in Zone 3, and I just, as a parent with young children, and also a Girl Scout troop leader, a lot of the volunteering that I do, I don't know if this will help, but the reason that we don't use the pool as often is because it opens when it's already hot outside. So I'm not going to take my younger children or any of the groups that I have because, you know, by noon, it's already 100 degrees. So I don't know if that would help. I know you have to pay for those operations and the staff during that time if you were to open earlier, but I would really recommend doing that, even allowing parties to be in the morning when it's more reasonable.
Good comment. Thank you for being here today. And I encourage any of the citizens watching today, if you have other ideas or creative ways that we can better manage and use that municipal pool, to please let us know. We're open to suggestions, ideas, and to make that municipal pool the best, one of the best assets we have, so. All right, any other public comment? Seeing none, we will take a vote on approving item E with the exception of the municipal pool fees. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
We will now move into our regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appellants are exempt from the time limit above, and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. Item A is consider approving the following items. One, approving six tax increment reinvestment zone private incentive projects in the south tiers for properties located at 213 North Chadburn, 215 South Chadburn, 402 West Beauregard, 36 East Tuig, 109 North Chadburn, and 109 South Chadburn totaling $263,270 to be paid for, from tiers north funds, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. And two, approving one tax increment reinvestment zone private incentive project in the south tiers for property located at 416 South Oaks totaling $15,924 to be paid from tiers south funds, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. You're on.
Thank you. John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. I'm going to go through each one of these, but I wanted to highlight real quickly that last thing you said is that six of these items are south projects that have been recommended by the tiers board to be funded with north funds, and I know there'll probably be some conversation about that, but the, the last one is a south project with south funds that was inadvertently left off of the list of projects that you all approved back a few months ago. And so just want to make sure you understand that distinction, that whether or not you decide to use north money on south projects, there is that one project that's just a regular south project with south funds that has been recommended. I'm going to just go through each one of these real quick. 416 South Oaks, the recommended funding is about $15,000 for facade improvements, landscaping, and sidewalk rehabilitation. This is the one project that's south, south project with south funds. You can see pictures of the building, you can see the dilapidated sidewalk there. It's, it's not a great image there on the bottom right, but that's the proposed improvements, basically refacing the entire building, reconstructing the sidewalks, and then planting a couple of trees in front. I didn't include the pictures that they provided, but of some of the other, some of the other museum-related buildings in the area that have also been improved, and so they're wanting to basically continue that theme of those other buildings that have been refaced, redone the sidewalks, landscaping, and just continue that on down.
What will be that, what will that building be used for?
I would defer to the applicant. Not all of these have indicated a particular future use. I believe this one has an artist for an art gallery lined up for that, but that, that's maybe something the applicant, if they're here, could answer better.
I think that's true.
And so that was, again, was the one project, south, south project with south funds. The rest of these are ones that are all south projects, but that the board recommended using north funds to, to do. 213 North Chadburn is the next one, $48,000 is the recommended amount, and I'll note that every one of these projects have been recommended for funding at 75%. The tiers board knew that there wasn't enough funding to fund all of these projects, and including back to the projects that you all approved back earlier in the year, all of the projects they've approved this year have been at 75% of the requested amount, so that's consistent across the board.
Carrie, did you have a question?
The question was, is these six projects that we're using north tiers money for?
No, we're requesting. We're not using, we're requesting. Very clear.
Should we be taking a vote on the one project in the south that's using proposed south tiers, and take separate vote on the other ones?
That's probably not a bad idea.
We will in the end, after the presentation.
Yeah, treating them separately would be a good idea, I think. Again, this item is for exterior facade improvements, the 200 block of North Chadburn. This is the, upper left is the building as it looks today, a rendering in the bottom right of, of what it would look like after the remodeling.
I don't think that's the current picture, what it looks like today.
Well, this was back, what they submitted, yeah, it may look very different right now, but this was what they submitted back in, I think, November, December timeframe, when these were originally submitted as applications. The next item is in the 200 block of South Chadburn, again, about $33,000. This one is for fire sprinkler and monitored smoke alarm, so there are no facade improvements on this particular project. That is a, one of the higher priority items within the tiers, the tiers policy for incentive projects. The two highest items recommended for funding with tiers money are facade improvements and then fire sprinkler systems. That's something that is a, can be a fairly pricey item that really is necessary to make redevelopment of a, an older building feasible, and that's often a big hurdle to redevelopment of a building downtown.
Just to open the doors. It's a key issue to open the doors.
Exactly. 402 West Beauregard, Hotel Angoria, this is the hotel building there on, I forget if it's Abe or Konigheim, I think it's Abe, $46,000. This is also some facade improvements, as well as a fire sprinkler and smoke alarm. This is, you can see the picture as it looks today, although now there's a chain link fence. They've started some of the site work, but you can see the rendering on the bottom is basically refacing the entire building, repainting, but also constructing a little, kind of a pool area there in the front parking lot.
So that hotel is called what today? Because that Hotel Angoria is, I guess, the new name by the new owners?
Correct. I don't believe it's open, and I forget what the name was back when it was operating.
Was it the Jackson House?
No.
No.
Kings End is what I'm hearing.
Kings End, that's correct.
Knights.
Knights of Kings.
Knights, Knights End.
Fifty years ago, it was the Jackson House.
Well, we're not dating ourselves, are we?
No, I'm not, no, I'm not, no, no, no.
And the, this is East Tuig, the Cactus Hotel, about $52,000. This does a couple of things, this project. It would remove some of the lettering off the sign on the very top of the building in anticipation of a future project that would restore all of those letters and, and put them back up. This part of the project is simply to remove those signs and make sure the structure is, is in good shape. A future aspect would be the restoration of the sign. And then the other piece of this is repairing the awning. And then the other piece of this is repairing the awnings. Back in the hailstorm that we had, whichever hailstorm it was, we've had a couple. The awnings in front of, over the windows and doors of that building were-
Doesn't insurance cover that?
Well, that's more of a question for the applicant, but as I understand it, they, because of the age of this building, it's too expensive to insure, and so it's self-insured. So there is no insurance that would cover that expense. They submitted pictures of all of the awnings. I just included one as a sample, but they were pretty beaten up from the hail.
Are awnings considered facades?
Yes, we've had a number of projects where either new awnings were constructed or repairs or replacement of awnings. It is an eligible expense. And you can see here, some of the lettering is obviously off of the sign atop the building, but this would remove the rest of those lettering, again, in anticipation of restoring them at some point in the future. And then this is the hundred block of North Chadburn, Concho Venue. It's about forty-nine thousand. This is another fire sprinkler and smoke alarm installation. I think we don't have a picture of that one. And then South Chadburn, the hundred block, Zetsmann Investments, about thirty-three thousand. This one is for facade improvements. I'll note that they received funding for the fire sprinkler as part of a previous round of funding. This is the second phase of their project to do the facade improvements, to improve the building. I won't read off all of that, but it's a number of things on the front, including new canopies and awnings on that one. Just a couple of pictures. The left is what it looks like today, and then the right is the proposed facade of that building. That's an overview of all of those projects. Real quickly, I have, in case there are questions, the most up-to-date financial report. The north has about just over two million dollars available. And I know there are some tiers board members here that may speak to this, but one of their rationales for using some of the tiers funding from the north on a south project was that the tiers north fund has built up to an extent that now we're over two million dollars, and their thinking was pulling a couple hundred thousand out of that for some very worthy south projects was reasonable in their mind. You can see here, the south is in a different financial situation, only about thirty-three thousand left. And so it, the south tends to spend all of their money every year. And then the amount set aside for the Chadburn Street project has only made it more difficult to fund south projects because about half of the funding each year in the south is automatically taken off the top for that Chadburn project. And so the combination of the reduced funding in the south and that excess amount in the north, the tiers board felt that using some of that for these projects in the south was worthwhile. I will note, and I think I have that on the slide, this, in order to use north funds in the south or vice versa, our adopted policy is, does require that both the tiers board and the city council by supermajority vote to do that. The tiers board vote on these particular projects was, I believe, unanimous, but in any case, it was a supermajority. And this will require six affirmative votes of the council in order to use those north funds in the south. I just included these maps in case there are questions about where those lines are. This is the north tiers. The line runs roughly about Third Street, although you can see it jogs a little bit from Third to Fourth. And then here's the south tiers. Again, the north tiers, you know, starts and goes up there. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions from council? Karen?
I'd like to ask Mr. James to remind the public and all of us the parameters of the Chadburn Street project for reference.
You mean the extent of the-
The large, four-hundred-plus thousand dollars that's dedicated?
Yes, a few years ago, it was decided to set aside a portion of the south tiers, well, actually some from both the north and south, for the Chadburn Street project. It was a relatively small portion of, I think, a twenty-million-dollar project, but we committed fifty percent of the funds coming into the south tiers every year for eight years towards that project, so it's not-
What year are we in?
That's a good question. I don't know if, Tina knows. I think we're maybe year four, something like that. Does that sound right? And while she's coming, we, we also committed about twenty-five percent of the north funds for that same eight-year period to that same project because a portion of it, two or three blocks at the north end, actually fall within the north tiers. None of that money's been used yet because we haven't gotten to that point on the Chadburn project.
To answer your question, we, the first year of this project was 2018 as far as the tiers funding was concerned, so we're currently in year five.
So in three more years, and then that four-hundred thousand comes back to the south. That streetscape program had been a long wish list. Almost historically, downtown redevelopment is something that usually gets started with streetscape programs. And so they're key for people really looking at the downtown area and making a decision to reinvest back into the zone. So there has been tremendous positive impact and comments from people who visit our city, people who have businesses downtown, and citizens who live in this city about how great that streetscape program has been. And so consequently, it might say, okay, so there's four-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand given to it. Well, the impact of that on our downtown area is probably exceeds that amount of, of money every year. So I don't think we can use that as an excuse. It's a positive, and it isn't justification for doing something different. It's a positive. Other questions or comments? Harry, all right, you're next.
I've looked through these projects, not all worthy projects, but as you know, there's been a great deal of thought and meetings and everything else concerning this imbalance. And I'm still having problems reconciling the fact that we're taking this in the north and giving it south. I think the optics are terrible, frankly. Second question, is there a commitment for the Cactus Hotel owners to replace the signs? Or can they just walk away from it after the sign comes down?
Yeah, there, at this point, there would be no commitment. This, the project they've asked funding for is to remove the lettering on the signs and restore, any restoration in the future would be something that they would, would choose to do in the future.
Oh, for all intents and purposes, they can walk away from it.
Well, no, they are under an enforcement action related to that sign being dilapidated, so there's no promise that they're going to continue, but we are going to continue to pursue enforcement on that sign to get it either removed or repaired.
Teresa, I believe the question is, once he takes it down, is there a commitment for them to put something else up?
There's not. Our only opportunity is to do the enforcement on the removal.
That is a landmark in this town.
Yes, and I know from speaking with, with the owners, the intent is to restore the sign. This is a first step, and it's a fairly expensive step because you have to have a huge crane to get up there. And, and so I know the intent is to restore those as a next step, but you've got to get this first step done first. And that would address, that would address the city's concerns from an enforcement perspective of the dilapidated nature of the sign.
Harry's up next. Are you through?
Not quite. In relation to my first item, I'm not sure how we can reconcile doing this after we've had meetings after meetings with people to try and figure out a better way to do this. And then all of a sudden, here we are pulling north money, excuse me, yeah, north money to the south. Was all, were all the meetings for naught?
No, I think there, there are two different issues. One is, even prior to those discussions, the board, the tiers board recommended taking this, this amount of funds for those projects. Sort of separate from that, they also opened a broader discussion of, should we change the way we do this completely? And I think that's, that's what we've had some meetings and some discussions about. Our current policy does allow north funds to be used in south and south funds to be used in north. It simply requires the supermajority vote. And so it was anticipated when it was set up that there might be circumstances where that could be done. But again, it, it leaves it up to you all to make that decision. There will be future discussions on, should we change how we split up those monies? In any case, and change those policies, you know, merge them all together or split them differently, and there's different options that have been discussed. In fact, there's a recommendation from the board to you all that you'll take up at some point to have that broader discussion. But today, we're just looking at these particular projects, and-
Well, no, it's broader than that. On this particular subject, that's it, but that's broader than that, so don't simplify it here. Harry?
From my perspective, and of course, I wasn't around when we, when we set the tiers board up and split it north and south. I'd like to see us get back to a spot where we're taking care of all the businesses along that Chadburn corridor, regardless of whether or not it's north of Houston Heart or south of Houston Heart. From my perspective, we've got, I've got businesses in District Three in the south. Majority of them are in District Three. And in the north, there's businesses on the east side, all the way to Nineteenth Street. So I want to see everybody be successful. I'd like to see these funds be able to be used in such a way that it helps all people along that corridor.
Lucy?
Oh, I just had a quick question back to the cactus, just so I can understand it correctly. If we were to approve that part of it, that is just to bring down that sign, correct?
It's correct.
Okay, that's what I needed to clarify.
For the questions? All right, I, yes, Tom.
John, going back to your slide on the finances, we just got a blue book this past week, and it said we had like one-point-four million to allocate from the north zone, and you said there was like two million?
Tina, you want to answer that?
And that, that may just be updated numbers, but, I mean, this book just came this week, so.
So the line that you're looking at is available, available for assignment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then we're adding in the ending zone balance of over five-hundred thousand to that number?
Okay. When does it start to reaccrue again? When do they start to add more funds to it? Is there a specific-
Every year, there's a portion of the property tax that's budgeted into the tiers fund. And that's based on numbers that the appraisal district sends us. They start with the two thousand and six, when it was implemented. Any incremental valuation increases since that point in time go to the north or the south tiers, depending on the lines that are drawn.
Does that usually hit our books? Is that a January, February number?
By January, usually, in line with property tax receipts. But I will say that it lags a little bit behind for the tiers because it does go to the county first, and then they send our portion to us.
We're at two, and an estimate here was, will be at two-five by probably, or two-six by April or May of next year?
Of next year? Yeah, their, their property tax budget for the north this year, seven-hundred thousand. So you'd expect that much, or maybe a little more next year.
I'm just trying to get an idea of the balance we have sitting there that's going unused at this point. So I will tell you, I have gotten, I wish we got paid by the hour on the phone that we helped on this deal, but the phone calls have been numerous and discussions have been long and lengthy. It's very territorial on this thing, and I get it. So what's cool with my district is I'm Twenty-Ninth and North, so I kind of don't have much of a dog in the fight as what zone is how it helps my district. It's very limited moving from Twenty-Ninth Street North. But I've had multiple phone calls from multiple people about this. And my point is, we're for economic development of the city. And my personal opinion is I hate to slow some private individuals down on their economic development, and I get that. But I will say, the biggest fear from the north zone has been if this ever was to get combined, that we would lose our representation from the north and that the revenue that's being generated up there is generated there for a reason to develop the north. Maybe the south zone needs to work on ways to expand its revenue. But, you know, number one thing I got was never for the consolidation of the two. Harry, I don't know if that helps you or not, but I mean, that's just, I'm telling you what my constituents say. They never want to see them together. I don't know how many times we've allocated from the north to the south, three previously?
There have been two times for sure, but every time when the south had money, they had to pay back the north. So it was never without repayment.
Okay.
So, and that has been historic, so it wasn't-
So would that apply to what we're talking to today, that-
Well, except if you do that, then the next people who apply in November get cut out. I mean, that means you're going to just constantly dip to the north. And so, I mean, once you open that window, where does it stop?
Well, and that's number one conversation I've had with several people the past seventy-two hours, is if you continue to feed that, will they ever, you know, close that mouth and survive on their own? But here, here's my opinion on being fair. I would hate to be in the south zone and need twenty-nine thousand dollars and look at somebody in the north zone that has two and a half million, and I can't get that, all right? Or it's, it's not allowed to me just because of where I bought the property. I will say, I have no problem, or let me, let me put it this way. I could see making the assistance to help and the transfer with a supermajority vote. If we take it at that, it's going to be less than ten percent of the funds. Right now, it's about fourteen percent of the funds, but if we add in the balance that comes in and we get to like two-seven, it'll be right at ten percent of the funds we have up there. I hate to see people wait just for the south balance funds to come on. And that may be three years before we get done with the capital improvement projects that are dedicated for Chadburn.
Well, there will be money that comes to the fund. It's just, that's when that ends.
So, you know, in a nutshell, I just need everybody to know that I've got multiple phone calls, and all of them have been, we don't want to share North Chadburn money with South Chadburn people. I personally hate to tell somebody just because of, you made an investment in San Angelo and you're south of Third Street. You can't have funds that, by the way, we're not using. That have gone unused. So with that, I just needed everybody to know where my stance is and when I vote, how I vote here in a little bit. That's the reason I voted that way.
You know, one of the things I think about is we talk about north, north and south Chadburn. To the cus, to the citizens of this city and those who come and visit and use Chadburn, they don't know north from south. They just know it's called Chadburn. And I think one of the key issues that we have to take into consideration is, and it will be a part of what is presented after this item. We have to make sure that the persons who travel on Chadburn don't notice a distinctively different environment when you are south of Houston Heart versus north of Houston Heart. In fact, the northern tiers money dips down to Fourth Street. And so part of that northern money helps what we call the business district of the south. Citizens don't know north versus south. What they do notice a difference when they're driving on Chadburn, something totally different when you go underneath Houston Heart and go further north. The number of people who use that route, whether it's for the rodeo or other events in the Coliseum, I think we should put our best foot forward and improve the corridor. We know the dramatic impact that the streetscape program has made in the south, very noticeable. And people comment on it all day long. I would hate to make a two-block or three-block impact and stop with making Chadburn a much more attractive route for everybody. And I think what we'll discuss later is how we do that, providing that we don't continually take away from the northern tiers for the southern tiers because there are people who can still use these funds in some of what we call the southern, what people would consider south Chadburn, but it really is north Chadburn. So I am not supportive of using the northern money for the south right now. I believe down the road, there could be some consideration. But I think what, in my mind, we need to do is not approve these expenditures using the northern money and listen to what is going to be proposed. And listen, I attended every one of those town hall meetings, every single one of them. So I think I'm a great voice for what the north wanted with those funds. I don't know of anybody else who attended all of them. Maybe Harry did. And what we found in those meetings was a combination of things. And what we found in those meetings was a combination of things. Many people didn't understand what the tiers program was. We have language barriers which confuse people and made people resist, and a fear factor of what this program might be. We have to spend time and effort to make sure that we have done all the education that we need to do on being able to use, utilize that northern tiers money. Alejandro Castro, oh, no, not Castro, Alejandro from the small business, yeah, office, has done a great job of getting out with walking the blocks, talking to people, and trying to encourage them to use those funds. And he is beginning to make a difference. In addition to that, what we realize is most of the pamphlets that we handed out to everyone was always in English. Many people who came to the meeting said, well, my mom has a business, but she doesn't speak English, she only speaks Hispanic, and so she's totally confused about how to use them, why to use them, et cetera. I think we, the northern tiers deserves a huge amount of effort on our part to figure out how to use those funds, and how to improve the overall corridor so it looks like a corridor, a positive corridor, not one that starts and stops at Houston Heart. So, I strongly support not using the northern funds for the southern projects as presented, and I am willing to make that motion to veto, I guess veto's the word, deny the request for using northern money in the southern tiers.
Can I make a further statement, ma'am?
Yes.
With the interstate being in our future, that's going to create an automatic drive towards the city, which means it's going to have a significant economic impact on everybody. The north is going to grow, and we need to be looking at that right now.
I agree. Lucy?
I just have a statement to make.
Well, let me just, okay, wait a minute, I've made a motion.
Oh, okay.
So, I need to second that motion.
Oh, well, I will second that.
And then you can make a comment.
Okay.
Please, you're on.
The reason that, oh, just briefly, there was a reason why this board was created to begin with, and it's like when you have a game, you can't change the rules in the middle of it. So, my other part is, the, the meetings that the mayor has gone through already, I was going to address that, but we've had those meetings, those town hall meetings, we've heard the people say what they felt, and the third thing is, when we're elected to take care of our people on the north side, we need to listen to what they ask of us. So, for that reason, I second that motion.
All right, there's a motion and a second to deny the request to use northern tiers money for southern tiers projects. Because there is a motion and a second, it is now open for public comment concerning that motion. If there's people in the audience who would like to come forward and speak to that, please do so now.
Greg Myers, I live at 19 North Washington. I was at probably 50 city council meetings when tiers was proposed and dealt with, and then revised to the current status with the supermajority to be able to do things. And what I see is there's some goodwill toward doing some things that would help the north. Problem is, there is an inherent reality that keeps them from being able to progress in the same way that the south has progressed. This began at a time when we were engaged in the revitalization of what the city designated as four blighted areas, two of them Reagan and Blackshear are in the northern tiers area. And the residential work has drawn praise from all over the state, and outside groups have indicated that those areas are not blighted anymore, there's a different constituency residentially than what there was originally. Problem is, that when you look at the north and the south, they are so radically different in terms of their resources, not talking just about tiers. When the, the tiers program came into being, the south portion of it had access to the downtown organization that was staffed, had high degree of professional people who were working on it, they had deep inroads into the Chamber of Commerce, into COSA DC, and all of the groups that, you know, support business in the community. On the north side, the business community was made up of very small, if you discount Walmart and that strip along there, was made up of very small business people, most of who have been trying to make a living on their own in these little areas. And even though we had great many meetings, there was not the organizational capacity to get something done. And before any radical changes are made in the structure, I'd like to make one suggestion, that in order for the north to ever be able to take advantage of having the money, it's terrible to be the least economically well-off folks in town getting the most money. If you would take a task force made up of the planning department of the city, COSA DC, the Chamber of Commerce, and take those folks and people from tiers to do a serious study using professional capacities, resourcing the people in the neighborhood to find out not only what they wanted, but what they needed and what they have to work with, to come up with a master plan there that has been talked about downtown in a lot of ways. I think you could solve a lot of this and use the money well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning, council and mayor. Just a couple, I have a couple of questions, and, and I don't know if I need to say it all at one time and then just wait for the follow-up?
Well, why don't you ask the question, we'll figure it out from there.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, thank you. Shirley Spear, single member, District Five. Okay, so, we had a couple of town hall meetings in the last few months to talk about this very issue, and so I want to first-
Three specifically.
Pardon?
Three town hall meetings, to be specific.
Okay, okay, three specifically. And I want to, thank you, mayor, for your comments this morning, that lets me know that you've really given some thought to the things that were said from the business owners and people of the community. But I guess my first question is, I believe the state has to approve any type of expansion, this may be for John James, and whether or not there's been any consideration to look at expanding the south tiers.
All of the above. Number one, the tiers zone is the tiers zone. It was approved by the state, the tiers zone was created and passed by the state at that point, so there's no changing of the tiers zone. There had been an opportunity to look at the southern tiers expansion going further south because of the Walmart there, but one of the requirements of a tiers zone is limited residential. And so, if you took a look at taking Chadburn down and expanding the southern tiers, the percentage of residential dwellings was too large to create a tiers zone going south. And furthermore, that Walmart in the south had already been captured, meaning it was too far down the road to capture. The reason the northern tiers fund is what it is, is because that land was captured in the northern tiers before the building was built. So, it was ground.
Okay.
So, the timing on that has a huge impact on whether you can, you can't, and then the number of residential dwellings that exist in that corridor. And those are the reasons it was not considered.
Okay, so that answers that question, thank you, Madam Mayor. The second part, I know that we keep referring to the Chadbourn corridor, and I know that's very important, and when I look at some ideas and plans that are coming up with the Coliseum, I want us to be considerate of that as we go through the development for the north side of this tiers. And Chadbourn is not the only street, you know, it goes over to Bryant, and so I want us to be mindful that we have a major highway, 87, that captures businesses that we can develop. We've put in some new businesses over the last six months there on 87th, and, and I want us to remember that we need to also look at how we can develop all of the areas of the tiers, not just down Chadburn, that's a key area, but also we have other sections of the north tiers that, that needs to be developed. I was just informed that there's a business on the north side that's trying to find grants so that they can do some work to their buildings. So, I would say, from a communication perspective, council and mayor, that maybe we need to do something in addition to what we have in our tiers board. I know when I walked the community, the last time we were planning meetings in the heat, I had asked for English and Spanish. All I got was English, and I want to say that we need to be conscious of who our constituents are in the community, and so we need to do more in terms of advertising and communicating. We had talked about getting the Small Business Development Center to help us.
They have, that's what Alejandro has done, and they have also gone on Spanish-speaking radio, and they are printing a Spanish tiers pamphlet.
Okay, so I just think we need to do more in terms of communication, but I do hope that you all go along with the motion that is currently on the floor for the council, and that is to not approve this request. Thank you.
Evelyn Smith, SMD Five, and I'm kind of new to this, so be patient with me. My first question is, is that I heard it said, correct me if I'm wrong, that when an applicant put in the application for the tiers funds, that they don't have to have a, they don't have to have a reason for the use of it?
There's very defined reasons, the very defined projects that the tiers money can be used for. So, all of that is inclusive of the information, but you can't just say you want to plant some flowers or something and ask for money. It's very defined in terms of what the money can and must be used for.
Even if the building is left vacated?
Even if the building has been vacated?
Yes, is there a plan that, what the purpose of the use for that building is after the restoration?
The property owner could request funds to improve that property, but if it's vacated, meaning no one lives there, no one owns it, no one claims it, then at some point, doesn't that property go to auction or something?
No, my, my question is that, it's been approved to be restored.
Right.
But there's no plans to open it.
That's okay, because we realize that, for example, many of the things that have been funded are facade improvements, and those facade improvements on a building improve the overall look of an area. So, even though they might not have found a tenant to utilize that building, hopefully with the improvement, for example, of a facade, that, that building would become more interesting for somebody to then lease it.
Understood, okay. My second question is, I think I heard that the next applications to be put in for tiers funds is in November, am I correct?
Is that correct, John? I'm not sure.
Well, the reason I'm hedging is, there, there is a cycle that should have started in May, but because of all the issues surrounding this, that's been delayed by the board, and so they could call another cycle before November. The next regular one would be November, however.
Why would you hold off on applicants for the northern tiers money, since there is money there? I mean, I, I understand if this conversation, but there was never an intent to wipe out the northern tiers funds, and no one should apply, because, I mean, why would we do that?
No, that's a good question. What the tiers board has actually, at their next meeting, will be discussing and voting on, is a change to the policy that would allow in the north tiers, no application cycle. Because of the amount of money there, the idea is, a tiers project, they could apply at any time, and they would be considered. Whereas, the reason, the original reason for the cycles was, in the south in particular, there's more projects than we have money to fund, so they wanted them all to come in at once, so they could compare them and pick which ones were the, the most worthy projects. But again, in the north, because there's so much money and we never get enough, you know, we never get enough applications for all of that money, now they're looking at just changing it where north projects can come in at any time.
I think that's the correct thing, to reevaluate the process for the north, because again, there's this significant difference between the north versus the south, and I really don't like having to talk about north versus south. I think we all would have been happier in the beginning if it was one zone, but it wasn't, and it wasn't approved that way. It was approved with a north versus a south. We are one community, Chadbourn is one, used to be 87 corridor, that certainly transports a lot of people, visitors, as well as citizens, but it is what it is.
Well, the, the policy hasn't changed yet. Right now, there are still cycles, but the board's going, going to be voting on a proposal that would allow, and, and so assuming they approve that later this month, then anybody in the north could begin applying at any time after that.
And where would they get that application?
It's available from Economic Development Office at the city.
And that's in the annex, so it was the old WIC building, is that correct, or what building was it? It's not in the main City Hall building, it's to the east of City Hall.
Is that the Business Resource Center?
Yes.
The BRC?
Oh, the BRC is where they get the application? No, they get them from you, right? Or the BRC? We need to be clear on this.
No, it's, it's at the Business Resource Center. And Economic Development, they have, they're the ones who process those applications, so they have the copies. I believe they're on the website as well, but I'm not 100% sure.
Is it 69?
69 North Chadburn.
69 North Chadburn is the old Coca-Cola office.
Fifty years ago, it was the Coca-Cola building.
No, more recently than that, but yes, it's been a while, 10 years, 12 years, 15 years, yes. So, okay, what else, ma'am?
Thank you for that, and my last question, and I agree with you that we have to say north side and south side. I, I wish we all were just in one big, you know, area.
We all do, but this is the way it's been created at this point.
So, with that said, on the north side of town, for restoration, there are plenty of churches in that area.
They're nonprofits, right.
They're nonprofits, so my question is, I mean, if we're trying to beautify the area and draw in more people and so forth, is there anything that the church can do to, the churches can do to help beautify their areas, because there's probably just as many churches as are businesses over there?
Well, let me explain what the tiers program is. It's called Tax Increment Refinances Zone, which basically means, at a date, the valuation of that property was established.
Okay, understood.
Any increase in that valuation of the property is the dollar amount that goes into this fund. So, one of the reasons there was hesitation to include churches is because they pay no tax dollars. So, they would be taking money from taxpayers, improve their property, and they pay nothing back into the zone.
Understood, okay. Thank you for clarifying that, and hats off to each and every one of you.
Thank you, dear.
Job's not easy.
Thanks for being here today.
Hello, my name's Adrian Soto, I'm District Five. I wanted to thank you for making a motion to deny. I think a lot of y'all have asked a lot of valid questions. You had, Tommy had mentioned something about like the numbers, and I think this kind of goes back to how you're talking about the pool area. And while I think this is like a small issue today, the bigger, the bigger issue is the budget overall, and needing to know, how do we get green? How do we get green in the south? And the reason that we're red in the south is because of certain things, and the reason we're green in the north is because of certain things. You said something about like thinking it's going to go to 2.6. It won't go to 2.6. We're using $800,000 of, in private incentives, which I believe that's businesses, and we're only bringing in $700,000 in income, so.
Yes, but see, that's calculated to that bottom number.
Right, but, but I'm saying, next year, yes, there will be more funds available, but we're also going to use more funds. So, I don't see it growing, I see it actually declining, is what I would think, but I, again, I don't know that for sure. I would love to look at numbers, because we have longer commitments for the next couple of years for the Chadbourn project, and I'd like to see how that plays out till 2025 and past that, just to see where we'll actually be at.
And we will do that, it's just not what we're going to do today.
Right.
But today, we're talking about specifically denying this request, and then you're going to hear a presentation on- to hear a presentation on suggestions on how to use this money. The reality is, with high inflation, the valuation of the money decreases as inflation increases. And so the idea would be to use the money so the valuation of the money doesn't decrease or lose value over time. But we have a plan to improve that corridor, reinvest that money back into the Northern corridor, which we hope will then incentivize people to want to reinvest in their businesses and improve that corridor. But that's the next conversation.
Right. Well, that was the only reason. I was like, I think it's great to vote it down until we figure out the bigger picture, because until we figure the bigger picture, just throwing a little bit of money, $300,000 every year, that doesn't fix anything long-term. So I think fixing that bigger picture, but I understand that's for the next discussion.
Thanks, Adrian. Further public comment? Seeing none. We've, oh, okay.
So I'll go back to what we were talking about earlier. And I just need everybody to know that this group here, sitting here at this bench, is very good friends, and we always will be. But I personally look at this, as we put the tiers board here for a reason. They came here with a supermajority vote to approve this. We are going against them 180 degrees. Is that correct? Because it comes in here, John presented, on a supermajority from the tiers board, to go, we're actually reversing their decision, I think for 10% of what funds we're going to hear. And Adrian, I'm with you, there's some vagueness in the books, but I think there's room to do both of these, to subsidize this and for the future of the North Chadburn project. And part of that, I think, is I would hate to be one of the six applicants that was looking for potential here, and to get this shut in their face, because they're north or south of Third Street. I would hate to be one of those six people, because this is almost a personal slap that says, no, you can't have money because of where you're at. I see everybody's point here, but for one chance, I think we could help some people move forward with their business. And we've got the printouts. It comes in approved with a supermajority. But I just needed to make that statement before we go forward.
Just to remember that in the next time they meet, the Southern tier, I mean, the tiers board, they would be the first applicants that would be considered for funding. So whether it's now or then, there's funds that will be approved for later this year in the Southern tiers fund. So it doesn't exclude them from being funded. It would make them the highest priority for Southern tiers funding. So, yes, Harry?
That's an accurate statement, Mayor. But there is only, can we get that other, the South, then? There's only a limited number of dollars on the South, right? Thirty-three thousand right now. And we're not going to increase that by a significant amount in the January, February timeframe comes, because we've got monies committed to other places. If you're looking at 260-some thousand, whatever that number was, for these three projects, six projects, they're never going to make it, even at the end of the year.
They might not, but here's the deal. So then the next people who apply in October, let's say it's October, November, and there's no funds for them, are we going to go back and ask once again for the money to come from the Northern tiers? Are we, I mean, you start a process, that when's the beginning and ending of that process? Oh, they've got money, so let's go back and ask for another 200,000 from the North. You can't be selective on this one time only, and the next go around tell those people where there's no money, hey, we're just going to go back and ask for the Northern tiers money again.
You could make it where it is a one-time situation. I mean.
And why would, if I'm the next in line for the next funding?
Because you already, they already know that we're never going to do that again.
Yes, but perhaps they shouldn't have been approved when there was no money and waited for the next go-around.
I agree with Tom. We put those people in a tiers board for specific reasons, so.
Lucy?
Speaking of tiers, there were some members on that tier board that felt they didn't have any choice but to vote that way. So I don't think that we have to just say, hey, they all did that because they knew that they didn't have a chance to stand on their own two feet, so they went ahead and voted that way. Exactly.
That's not what we're discussing right now. So, yes, would you like to introduce yourself?
Zane White, District 6. Regards to the Cactus Hotel sign. In 1992, multimillionaire Lee Fluger obtained Cactus Hotel ownership absolutely free after a previous owner had been forced to abandon the building due to incredibly strict building code enforcement by the City of San Angelo. In 2005, Lee Fluger used grant money to remove 12 of the 22 gigantic sign letters with the stated intention of repairing electrical lighting inside the letters and then immediately reinstalling them. Reportedly, those letters currently remain in the Cactus Hotel basement, and no legitimate sign renovation has been initiated since then. Throughout the entire seventeen consecutive years during which those letters have remained in storage, the city has knowingly and intentionally refused to cite Lee Fluger for numerous undeniable sign code violations. According to Lee Fluger, the lack of money is the only reason sign renovation has not been completed. After more than thirty years living elsewhere, I returned to my hometown of San Angelo less than two years ago. In January of this year, I proposed a potentially cost-free rooftop sign renovation project to Lee Fluger and city officials. Since then, aside from the seventeen years of illegal non-enforcement by the city, I've obtained substantial evidence regarding additional blatant ongoing ethical branches, breaches, I'm sorry, involving Lee Fluger and city officials. I'm convinced this entire tiers funding process has been corruptly manipulated in order for Lee Fluger to avoid enormous code violation penalties and for certain city officials to evade massive potential lawsuits and potential public corruption convictions. Again, misleading faults, misleading and false statements on Lee Fluger's proposed project budget form, including in today's agenda, are an embarrassing insult to a legitimate tiers funding process and to the intelligence of all San Angelo citizens. Again, time restraints here prevent me from appropriate elaboration in this forum, but I have credible evidence that since January, certain city officials in this room have intentionally deceived the DHRC and have intentionally deceived the tiers board regarding this matter. For years now, every city official here today has intentionally or unintentionally been complicit to some degree regarding improper actions or inactions by the City of San Angelo Municipal Government as it regards the Cactus Hotel rooftop sign. I strongly encourage you to break that cycle today.
Thank you. Further public comment? Seeing none, we will take a vote. I will ask each individual person to, yay means to deny. Is that correct? If you vote yay, that's to deny the request. Starting with Larry.
For the six properties, we'll take a vote on the separate one, on Item B, after this.
Yes, this is for Item A. Larry?
Yay.
Karen?
Yay.
Lucy?
Yay.
Brenda Gunter?
Yay.
Harry?
Nay.
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 Motion is denied. We will now move on to Item B of the Item A. And that is, I mean, motion, I mean, Item 2 on Item A. So Item 2, just to remind everybody, is approving one tax increment reinvestment zone, private incentive project in the South tiers for property located at 416 South Oaks totaling $15,924 to be paid from tiers South funds and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Are there questions? Or is there a motion for approval of Item 2, which would be Item A 2?
Move.
A move by Harry. Is there a second by Karen? Any public comment? Seeing none, may we take a vote on Item A 2? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There are none opposed. Motion passes 7-0. We will move into Item B, First Reading and Public Hearing of an Ordinance for Z22-12 to Rezone Properties from Low-Rise Multifamily Residential and General Commercial Zoning Districts to the Single Family Residential Zoning District being 22.76 acres located southeast of North Bentwood Drive and Crystal Point Drive.
Thank you. Again, John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is in the Bentwood area. As you can see here, there's an area that was zoned commercial and multifamily back when this area was originally planned out. But they've already moved forward to develop this area as single-family residential. So this is simply rezoning from the multifamily and commercial back to a residential zoning. The area's future land use is neighborhood. We did send out our notifications, received eleven in support and one outside the area in opposition. It's.
Someone would oppose it going from multifamily to single residence? Is that what you're saying?
I think based on staff's conversation with that person, they were unclear on what the proposal was.
Yeah, because usually it's the reverse.
Right. So staff does recommend approval, and the Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval of this rezoning. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there, Tommy?
No, ma'am. I was just going to move for approval.
Okay, motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tom. Public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Item C, First Reading and Public Hearing of an Ordinance for Z22-13 to Rezone Properties from Two-Family Residential Zoning District to Low-Rise Multifamily Residential and General Commercial Zoning Districts being 1.08 acres located southeast of South Coiningheim Street and West Avenue A.
This is a rezoning, as you mentioned, from two-family residential to mostly multifamily, although there's a piece here, there's a piece of, I think that's Crockett Bank, a piece of their parking lot is zoned single-family. And so we're just, we added that in to clean it up and rezone it to commercial to make their parking lot conforming. The area is within the future land use plan is part of downtown, the larger downtown area. But as you can see, it's currently zoned RS2. And so there's a proposal, there is, there was a property with a previous use where they had three units on the property. They had removed one of those three units and now want to move it back onto the property. But in the RS2 zoning district, a maximum of two units are allowed on the property. And so they've sought this rezoning to a multifamily designation. Staff has added in the rest of that block, because it is designated in the downtown. It's adjacent to commercial. There's already another use of two units on the property. So we think that entire rest of that block makes sense for multifamily. We did receive one opposition from this property owner. They actually do have two units on the property, and in the past, it has been used as a short-term rental. I don't believe they had any comment on why they were opposed. This doesn't, it really doesn't change what they can do with the property, other than it would allow them a third unit on the property if they chose to do that at some point in the future. But if, if that opposition is concerning, we, that could be removed from the approval, if that's your recommendation. As I mentioned, the one piece of property there that would be going to general commercial, that's the portion of the bank parking lot that's, that have, they expanded their parking lot into that residential area, and that's a legal, a legal non-conforming use of the property. This would just legalize that use.
So just to be clear, the bank's requesting? I'm confused about what we're doing here.
No, it's, the bank is not requesting, but because it cleans it up for them, and they have no problem with this, we added that in as a staff-initiated portion of the rezoning beyond what the applicant had asked for.
Would you show those pictures again?
Yeah, these are just some of the homes in the area. This, this is the property that has requested it, at 308 West Avenue B. This is a third unit on the building that they, I guess they moved off to do some repairs and now want to move back on, because it was basically an illegal use of the property with that third unit, because it doesn't comply with the existing RS2 zoning.
They moved it away and now are requesting to zone it correctly so they can move it back?
Correct.
Okay.
Couple more pictures. This is that parking, the bank parking lot that the city added in. Staff recommended rezoning just to clean it up for them, since we were already doing a rezoning in the area. I already mentioned all of this. It is in the downtown. It is a transition area and the parking lot of the bank. Staff does recommend approval. The Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval. There is a note there that that property is not properly platted, not related to the zoning, but they understand that once this is approved, they will have to replat that property in order to move that third unit on.
Questions or comments? Harry?
Move to approve as presented.
A second? Do I have a second? A second by Tommy. Public comment? With seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. We'll move into Item D, First Reading and Public Hearing of an Ordinance for Z22-15 to Rezone Properties from Two-Family Residential Zoning District to Office Commercial Zoning District being .23 acres located at 103 and 107 West 14th.
Thank you. This may look familiar. You saw this case not too long ago. It's a property on 14th Street. The applicants had built a church on that property and had gotten approval for that. Since then, and with COVID and everything, the church, they've looked at expanding what they do on the property beyond the church. They had come to you and had come to the Planning Commission with a request for commercial zoning for something like a retail use, like a coffee shop. The Planning Commission denied that. You all upheld that denial, and so it was not rezoned to the general, or the neighborhood commercial district. What the applicants have done now is come back, and you may recall that there was a neighbor that was opposed. They've come back with a lesser zoning request of just office zoning. And so in this, now we don't have any opposition from the neighbors. It gets them a step in the direction of where they want to go, without expanding it to the full scope of retail uses that had some concerns from, from the neighbors, as well as you all and the Planning Commission. It is an area of neighborhood. It's between MLK and Chadburn, so there are commercial corridors on either side. But this is sort of in the middle of the neighborhood, so there is some concern about allowing more intensive commercial in the area. But this type of office use would be compatible with the neighborhood. Like I said, we did send out our notices to the surrounding property owners. This time, we did not get any opposition from the neighbors with this lesser office zoning. Just a couple of pictures of the building itself.
Is there a church? Is there church being, meeting, is there church services being done in that facility?
I know the applicants are here, and I'll defer to them to answer what they're actually doing with it today. This is just looking at a couple of directions. There is another church and other uses that are non-residential in the area. Much of this I already described, but as I mentioned, there's a church and a funeral home on 14th Street between MLK and Chadburn in this area. So there is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Tom, yeah, please.
Tom, was that a for-sale sign?
Looked like one. Yes.
Yeah, they have marketed this, trying to sell the property for a church use or somebody else to take it. I think, again, I'll defer to them on their rationale for all of that, but I believe they're just looking at options.
That would make this make more sense. Okay. We're good.
This does come with staff recommendation for approval. The Planning Commission also recommended approval. You may recall, I said they denied it the last time for the commercial zoning. It did get an approval vote. It was 3-2. There were still two commissioners who weren't comfortable with any type of office or commercial in this area and thought it should remain purely residential zoned. But it was a majority vote of the commission to recommend approval.
If it was purely residential zoning, how was a church, because it wasn't, the church wasn't approved?
Well, yes, it was. That's a very good question, because we, our ordinance is very permissive of churches, and we see concerns like this. Because we're so permissive of churches, you can build churches in neighborhoods. But then if it stops being a church, what do you do with it? It's hard to convert it to a single-family home or even apartments. And so often we see people wanting to convert those churches into a business or an office. But as I said, they're often in the middle of neighborhoods and so that creates this conflict of what do you do with an old church that's not a church anymore? And there's a hesitancy to rezone it to commercial or office, but what else do you do with it? It sits there vacant. So it's, it's really a function of how permissive we are with churches as compared to other retail office and commercial kind of uses. So it, that's the reason though, is that we do allow churches in areas we wouldn't allow any other type of non-residential use.
Questions for John? Yes, Karen?
Each time this piece of property is put forward, either at the Planning Commission or here in these chambers, the funeral home is mentioned as a neighboring business. So I've visited that area a couple times, driven around, and I wonder if you can provide confirmation that that is indeed a funeral home, because when you dial their telephone number, it is disconnected and there are very visible signs that it's occupied as multifamily residence. Unit A, Unit B, for example. So it's tangential to the larger conversation, but I don't think it can, it doesn't appear that it can be used as an argument that there are other businesses in the neighborhood and reference this maybe a funeral home, maybe not.
Yeah, and I cannot confirm that it is a funeral home today as we speak.
Well, how would it get permit to go from a zone, from a funeral home to living? I mean, isn't there, wouldn't there have been something that had to go through the planning department to go from a funeral home to an apartment complex, so to speak?
If, if they did it legally, yes, it would have had to go through permits and that's something that we can look into.
If it was done legally, why do we not have record of it? And why was that not part of this conversation?
That's a good question.
We're calling it a church, aren't we?
No, this is a funeral home.
Talking about the funeral home on the corner.
Something we would have to look into to see if, it, it may have been done in the past. I'm not sure why.
The sign's still up as a funeral home.
And I'm guessing that's why our staff identified it as a funeral home is just from the sign, but you know, honestly, we just typically don't look that in-depth unless there's some question that's been raised. And, and till today, there was no reason to question it, but.
We're talking about a funeral, we're talking about a church. We're not, we're not talking about a funeral home here before us, so.
No, but in terms of looking at the overall zoning of it, if that is multifamily, not a business, and we're referring to there are other businesses there, then that's an incorrect statement.
Maybe that's a question for a code inspector to pursue.
It's also part of the bigger conversation about approval or denial is, is it residential living or is it a business? Because then if it's a business, what, or not, then do we have businesses on that street?
And again, I would say that our, our long-range plan anticipates that it's, it can be okay to have non-residential in a neighborhood. You can have small neighborhood commercial. You can have offices, like a real estate office or something that can be appropriate in a neighborhood, so.
Then the question is, is it legal? Is that, if that funeral home is housing, is that legal?
If you're talking about the funeral home, then, then the short answer is, I don't know. That's something we'll have to look into. But in terms of this particular request, even though it's within a neighborhood, it's not unusual for a small property, particularly on a corner lot, to be rezoned to something like office. In fact, on the south side, you saw a case, maybe six months ago, similar case with a church that was rezoned to office zoning to accommodate conversion to an office in a very similar situation to this. Of course, each one is unique, but it's not unheard of for this kind of rezoning in a, in a neighborhood.
The question is, is there a church? Is the property we're talking about, has a church been established in that piece of property?
Yes, they have held services there as a church. I would defer to the applicant if they're still meeting at that location.
Yes, Larry?
Let me get this straight. Now, if, if we do this commercial zoning, does this prohibit them from all of a sudden opening up a coffee shop?
Yes, because the office zoning would allow something like a real estate office, but it would not allow retail uses. So it wouldn't allow grocery store, it wouldn't allow a convenience store or coffee shop. Any of that, that sort of retailer restaurant would not be allowed.
Further questions? Okay, then is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Lucy moves to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second that, ma'am.
Tommy seconds it. We are open for public comment. I don't know if the owners of this property would like to come forward and speak or not. Shirley, go ahead and come up. It'd be fine. Yeah, come on.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Edward Gonzalez and this is my wife Linda and we're the owners of the property. And we live right across the property, which is 116 West Fourteenth.
Thank you.
Yes, and first of all, I'd like to say thank you for each one of you that spoke because it makes our point of something that we've been trying to get established. As John stated, we're requesting a zone change from RS two with the conditional use as a ministry to office commercial. These lots were initially, they were empty lots. We bought a building and we moved the building. We hadn't moved onto this property, not as a residence, but as a ministry building. And we provided counsel with pictures on the, on the small packet with some of the businesses on West Fourteenth Street that are intertwined with residential properties. COVID affected church and the ministry attendance and it didn't make sense for a building to sit there practically empty. There's been an increase of criminal activity at this property because the building looks vacant. We only use the building a few days a month as we primarily do biblical counseling. As one of the members stated earlier, he wants to see everyone be successful and we're striving for that. We're not a nonprofit organization of any kind and we pay taxes on this property along with commercial utility rates and insurance. We've paid for everything out of our own personal monies. We believe changing the zone to office commercial is reasonable and we're asking for fairness. On page one of that small packet, that resident, that residence right there was given a zone change to commercial and it's on page one and it's ABLE's income tax service. And it looks like a house. And we look like a, a business, like a building. And that was given approximately two years ago. So what we're asking for is we're asking for fairness. We're surrounded by businesses, one block to the east of us and one block to the west of us. This is a major throughway for commercial vehicles of all kinds, as you can see on pictures nine and 10 in your large packet. Let me see. And I think those are primarily the, the main points. To the question of the funeral home, it's operating as a business. It was actually Mr. Adams that sat on the council that owned that funeral home. He lived on the top. He ran his funeral home at the bottom. He sold it as a funeral home and the way I understand it, Mr. Gutierrez has purchased it. They were doing funeral services when it was still owned by Robert Massey because we have a lot of funeral processions go through Fourteenth Street as we do police officers, ambulances. It's not your residential neighborhood. But I think what they're doing is they're, they're still affiliated with funeral home type of business. I think, gosh, I don't want to speak incorrectly, but I think they harvest body parts and that's where they store them. There's a caretaker that goes there and takes care of the property, but there's nobody that lives there at that property. And that is across the street from us, as well as all the businesses that you can see running up and down Fourteenth Street, to include Palmer Feed, Hidalgo's, Churches, Quickie Food Mart, Iliana's, the Baymont, KFC, the Fence Company, Linda's Pawn Shop, just to name a few.
Several.
Yes, ma'am.
Many?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, with, do, do, does anyone have a question?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So with that.
Shirley wanted to speak.
Yes, we're gonna, Shirley Spears wanted to add a comment, so thank you for coming forward and providing these.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So a lot of the businesses that they're talking about are, they're not within that one block. And I'm glad they brought out the funeral home. It used to be, it's a historic home, although it's not designated historic that it is where Mrs. Starks had her mortuary and she and her daughter lived upstairs. And so as we look at changing this, I wonder, although it's not done, I wonder if it will have an impact on any historic opportunities for that property that is there in that one little block. And so the other businesses that they spoke of, Palmer and the KFC and all that, those are in opposite ends. KFC certainly off of Bryan, Palmer off of Chadburn. But in this particular section, which it has not yet been done, and I know that Ms. Butler's here, she may be able to speak more to it, but there is historic relevance to that funeral home, for whatever purpose they're using it for now, I can't confirm. But I do know that it has significant historic connections in that community, that particular house, what it was used for, the whole thing. So I'm questioning if in approving this, would it create a problem for any future consideration to declare that facility, regardless of who owns it, as historic? That's my question.
It can be approved as historic regardless of what we choose to do today. It would not impact that ability to designate it as a historic landmark of any kind. So if there's a desire to do that, one should move forward on it and that would have no impact on the decision today.
Okay. And so if there, there are not very many lots, there's one that's right there and near the corner of Chadburn and Fourteenth. So would that mean that someone would have to put a, an office space there or could they put a home there? Could they build a residential structure there if this passes?
I'm not the expert on these things, so John James, if you, as our expert, would come forward and answer that for her.
Yeah, on the subject property, the zoning to office, I believe, would then not allow it to be a home in the future, but it would be office type uses that would be allowed.
But there's another lot that's, there's another lot going toward Chadburn. And so would, would a person be able to purchase that and build a residential structure or would they then have to build an office structure?
We're just doing this one piece of property today, period.
I understand, but.
Correct. It would not change that. In your example, that would still allow a home to be built.
Okay, that's what I needed. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments as, as public comment? You've already spoken one time, so it's really what we allow is one time to the microphone? All right, with that, we'll take a vote.
What's a motion?
Oh, was, I thought there was a motion. There is a motion and a second.
What was the motion?
To approve.
Okay.
Okay, with that, we will take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, is that a aye, Harry?
No. I have a no vote as well.
I'm sorry, I didn't read everybody's heads. So five to approve, two to deny. Motion passes. With that, we will move into our closed session, the executive session under the provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement that Meetings be Open under the following sections. A, Section 551.074, Personal Matters Regarding the City of San Angelo's Fire Chief. Meeting will be called back to order from executive session. The first item on the agenda is to consider items discussed in executive session. And so we'll proceed with that. Daniel?
Yes, ma'am. The item that was discussed in executive session had to do with the fire chief position and moving forward for the city, how that would look. I went into executive session, having had Patrick Brody as the interim fire chief for the last 120 days. I wanted to give him an opportunity to prove himself, even though I felt that he had already proven himself over the many years, 21 years that he's been with the department. He served the last three years as the assistant chief, which I know for a fact, working closely with him, that he's done an outstanding job. He's very well respected by his staff. I believe he's a strong leader. And so I went into city council meeting and I want, I want to say this for the, the sake of the, the citizens. I went into the city council meeting with the idea of appointing Patrick Brody as our next fire chief. I want to know, make sure that the citizens understand this process. Although it is my appointment, I still have to present this information to the city council members in executive session, which have an opportunity to ask all the questions of me as to why I feel that he is the best candidate for this job. After all the questions are asked of me, of course, Chief Brody came in and the city council members had a long series of questions for him as far as the interview that, that he went through. Although the position is appointed by the city manager, if the city council does not approve my appointment, I have to go back and start all over again. So it's important for the citizens to understand that this isn't just a one-person process, that this is a committee, this is a group that makes this, this decision, because it is an important decision for our community. We want to make sure that we have the best fire chief, running the best crew and staff that he has. And in my opinion, it is Patrick Brody. Again, as I mentioned a while ago, 21 years of experience, he's climbed every rung of the ladder. He has performed every duty. He's done extremely well at each level. He has all the certifications. He's got his bachelor's degree also in, in business management. And he has, again, everything that we could ask for of any candidate, Chief Brody matches or surpasses it. So it is my appointment or my recommendation that's pointing to the city council is that we appoint, or I appoint, Chief Patrick Brody as the next fire chief for the City of San Angelo.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Tommy?
Mayor, may I?
Please.
Add some comments to that? I have known Patrick for 20-plus years and have, have had conversations with him in his position now as the interim chief, just about general things regarding the department. We had an opportunity as a council to, to ask Patrick some, some hard questions. We had the opportunity to hear from Patrick as to his, his strategic direction for the department, about some of the things that he would consider doing to improve the department. And I am, I am convinced too, after listening to his answers, thoughtful answers, he did not, in my opinion, struggle with any of the tough questions we ask him. And Daniel, I would agree totally with, with your recommendation and appointment. And Mayor, having said that, I would make a motion to approve the city manager's appointment of Patrick Brody as the new fire, fire chief for the City of San Angelo.
Do I have a second?
It would be my pleasure.
A second by Karen. With that, I'm going to ask for any public comment, but since there's no public in the, in the room, we will obviously have no public comment. And so I will give, before we vote, an opportunity for each city council member, should they like to, to add to Tommy's comments.
I'd like to do that.
Thank you, Larry.
I think one of the things that impressed me is his breadth of knowledge of, of the fire business. And also you can tell he's got fire in his belly still. He's got a passion for this job that is, is very, very obvious. To me, the answers weren't as important as, as the emotion I saw in him when he was expressing how he felt about the fire business.
Thank you. Other comments? Go ahead, Karen.
I think Patrick offers to this community not only his incredible experience and expertise over many years, but effective leadership, creative problem solving, and outstanding character. So it's a pleasure to recommend him.
Lucy, would you like to add anything?
No, y'all kind of covered it all up for me, but I just want to say thank you so much for what you've already done in the 21 years here in San Angelo and I look forward to working with you in the future. So my recommendation would be yes.
Harry?
I, I think we've probably made the best choice of any individual that we could put in this particular position. Certainly qualified, certainly a leader, and I characterize that word in quotation marks because he is certainly a leader and it's going to take a leader for this particular job. I'll also say that I don't envy you coming out of the ranks and being the boss. I've had to do that before. And I had to give up some social relationships because of that situation. But to you, in the long run, I think we're making the best choice.
I'd like to point out that over the past 90 to 120 days, it's been a vetting process. Patrick Brody. decision. We went to, you know, Daniel's in charge of putting together kind of a final opinion of it. We all made steps out there to go through that process and spend some time getting to know Patrick and his philosophies and his goals and how he's going to achieve, what he wants to go on, and more importantly, where he's going to take the fire department the next five, ten, fifteen years. With that, we are, I'm proud to say that we probably picked the most viable candidate available. Thank you, Patrick.
I would support each of the comments that the council members have offered. I truly believe that a leader has the, has the ability to quickly address the issues, the challenges, the needs for where we need to go. And I look forward to us moving forward. This is a key position for the health and safety of our citizens, and so we do, we don't do this lightly. And we certainly put Patrick through somewhat of intense thirty minutes of questioning and challenges, not because we think he was not the great guy that he is, but because we needed to hear where he was going to take us and for him to understand what our expectations and priorities are. So I thank you for that time, that effort, and the communication that we were allowed to have up there. And so with that, I have a motion and a second, so we will take a vote. I'm going to start with Larry. Yes?
Aye.
Aye, Karen?
Aye.
Tom? I mean, Harry?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Tommy?
Aye.
And Mayor Gunter, aye. So the motion is seven to zero. Daniel, move forward. And Patrick, congratulations. With that, we will move in, I thought the meeting was over almost. Okay, sorry, lost my track there. With that, we will go into eight B, which is consideration of approving various board nominations. Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, Michelle Barnett, SMD four to an unexpired term ending January twenty-twenty-three. Charter Review Committee, Jeff Curry, SMD five, and that is to replace John Austin Stokes, so it's not an addition to that charter committee. Keep San Angelo Beautiful, Michelle Barnett, Mayor, Alternative one to an unexpired term ending September twenty-twenty-two. And Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board, Jim Cummings, Mayor, John Mark Hoag, SMD one, and Greg Gaylor, SMD two, each to a third term. Antonio Villarreal, SMD four to a first term, all ending July twenty-twenty-four. And I want to add a comment to this last Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board nominations. I think we have terrific people on that board. I do not challenge that, that some of them are not qualified. I think they're all qualified. They've had to deal with a very political hard situation over the past few months, and it wasn't easy for any of them. And I respect all of those who showed up to the town hall meetings and asked their questions, gave their input to get us to where we got today. So I don't want there to be a belief that, that I for sure believe we have a very strong Tax Increment Refinance Zone Board, and I thank them for their service. With that, may I have a motion for approval of the above board nominations?
I move to approve.
Lucy made a motion to approve and seconded by Larry. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, those board nominations are approved. Are there any announcements in consideration of future agenda items? Just to remind everybody, July twenty-sixth at eight-thirty a.m. here in this room, we will have a joint meeting with the planning commission, and then it will be followed with a enterprise zone budget session. It looks like it's going to be a full day. And with that, may I have a motion for adjournment?
If I could, real fast. While you guys were in executive session, we did receive a written public comment from a citizen. He did want us to pass that out at this time so that you could have it this meeting rather than waiting for the next meeting. So I'll just pass that out real quickly.
Okay. So with that announce, may I have a motion for adjournment?
If we adjourn.
Second by Tom. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of adjourning this meeting at eleven-fifty-nine a.m.
Aye.